...of effective January 1 of 2011, I don't know if you're aware of it or not. But children that were age 26 or under could come on the parents' plan and stay on the parents' plan as long as they weren't offered health care through their employer. And they didn't have to, they could be married, they could be living in another state, but they were allowed to come back on the plan. And I think you had a few that did take advantage of that. And another thing was that pre-existing conditions on children 18 and under was also implemented at that time. And those were some good things. And now we're getting into the meat of the Affordable Health Care Act, which are going to impact your dollars and how you think about budgeting as we move forward this late August and first of September, when you'll be looking at what you all have to spend that's required under the Health Care Act. And one of those things in your packet about the third page back is this ACA Taxes and Fees for 2014 that will be coming up. So there's a fee that where you have to pay $5.25 per member. That's every belly button if you were, if you would, that's insured. So you know, it's the husband, the wife, how many children. And that is $5.25 per month per member. So I took the number of employees or, excuse me, the number of members that you had at your renewal in January, it was 313. And that figure, if we project it out, that you'll need to fund will be close to $20,000 in addition to whatever, we don't know yet what your renewal will be next year either. But that figure is one thing that's pretty much locked in. It is what it is. There's no juggling that around too much. The other thing is called a comparative effective research fee. And I've also included a couple of little, what I call Reader's Digest versions of what these fees are and what they mean to you. But that in the first year, which will be 2014, will be a dollar per person, per member, and that came out to $626. So those fees are fees that you know that we've helped, helped you and we're going to be with you through this whole process. And Bridgette and her, some of her staff and the mayor has attended some classes on what the Indiana Association cities and towns offered recently. We, as Nissau Lukens, are also involved in training and keeping abreast on what's going on so we can advise you about what you're going to be facing down the road. So this probably isn't going-
One question. Maybe I didn't hear you right. You said it was a dollar a person. We had 313 people, but it's going to be 600 and some dollars?
626, yeah.
But how's that at a dollar a person?
It's a dollar a person per, um-
I thought you said there's 313 or-
Right.
There was two different fees, I understand.
There's two different fees, yes. There's the two different fees where it says the first year and the second year. So just wanted to kind of give you an idea of what to anticipate down the road and you know going in, how much you're going to have to budget in addition to what you already probably budgeted in, you probably factor in what your health care costs are going to be for the next, for the next year. And we do that and we try to advise you as we look this fall based on your claims numbers. So that's why every quarter I come in here and we sit down with your insurance committee and we go through your claims and those that are ongoing claims that we know you're going to have, that's never going to go away, and things that, issues that you have that maybe haven't been resolved with your members. So I know this is a lot to throw at you here and we'd be glad to come back and answer any questions as we get closer to your budget time and try to help you and advise you what health care reform is going to do to your, to your budget as you go forward in 14 and 15. Thank you very much. You have any questions? All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Based on the agenda, our Clot F. Camper myself, we reviewed this last year, our grass code ordinance, and we'd like to discuss it with the council if possible.
I think you've got, have a copy of, unfortunately, the color got lost, but it's printed. On page one of definitions of nuisance vegetation, your note says change to seven where it says nine inches currently. The other change is on the third page at the top under subsection A. We had a 10-day notice. We'd like to change that to five days. And we've had discussions with Chief Tastin PD and we'd like to add where it says even the notice or the letter can be substituted with notification by a Greensburg police officer. We run into a problem when we send out registered letters, the post office will attempt to make free deliveries over the course of about 20 days. Those people know what they are. They do not sign for it. So then by the time we get them back, it's been 20 days. And if you have nine-inch tall grass the first day, I can tell you by the 21st, we need to go out with a tractor and trailer. It's horrible. And to try to keep the complaints from the neighbors down, we'd like to change the height down and shorten the notification period. In other words, nobody wants to look at a jungle outside their house and pull the milk and that is pretty hot.
You have nothing.
I guess my thoughts, I mean, I think you need to give people time to react in case something's going on. And so I like 10 days. I don't mind changing it to, you know, adding a police officer, servant other than a certified male, but I, I'm not in favor of changing the number of days.
Okay.
Here's my opinion.
And you're right. For genuine cases that people are ill or the people who normally take care of property for them fail to let them know that they cannot be there to maintain the property, cut their grass, I agree with you. And usually it's the first time that we ever, before we send out a letter, the first time that someone who's lived there for five, 10, 15, 20 years, they don't cut their grass, we're going to check into them because they've been good residents.
First off, those are never a problem.
No.
I don't care who those people are, it's not a problem. These are the same properties year after year. They're people that, for example, there's a possible site on the north side of town. I know you know exactly where it's at. The people, we sent, we contacted them personally last year. They said it was a bad investment, we washed our hands of it, you can do whatever you want, we're never going to mow it, we don't care what you do. Why do I want to sit and wait? The rental property on the south side of town, there's three or four of them, they're the same problem year after year.
Why not add a provision then if they've, if they're a repeat offender in the last, you know, 24 months, if they've been served a letter the last 24 months, then maybe you shorten the time down.
We've got that.
We're scheduled for the last 12 months.
Right now, if it's in the same growing season, Jamie, we don't, we don't have to give many notifications.
Jamie, the people that you're trying to take care of are not a problem. They are not the concern. Those people mow their grass. They're good citizens and residents.
I guess that's just my concern is, I mean, I hate to make a, you know, an ordinance in place that's going to penalize somebody maybe that isn't, you know, and that's my concern.
And we don't want to do that. We do not want to do that. But when we know people, the residents, the house by number, by heart, we know there's a problem. It's the same landowners or the same, all the time. Very few people that go through this own their property from year to year. There are some people who own their property we have problems with, but they're few. The ones who don't mow their grass or who's there for a while, they're here and they're gone.
Can I just add, I mean, I applaud what you're trying to do for Jamie, but the normal resident of the city of Greensburg thinks that it's just the city of Greensburg not wanting to deal with it. I've had three people this week calling me raising the heck over whether it's trash or whether it's grass or whatever because it continues to grow and I have to explain to them, "I'm sorry, but we've got to wait 10 days and then we've got to wait for the letter to come back." And they just roll their eyes and walk away and say, "Yep, you know, you're still not doing anything."
Well, dang the street. Is it at nine inches yet? Is the grass at nine inches yet?
Which street?
First street.
Yes.
Yes.
It's at nine inches, just reached. Go look at it. Now, once we give them 10 days, we know they're going to ignore us. Now you're talking cutting grass two weeks from now or better, by the time we can get to it. Now it's grown another four inches, now we've got over a foot of grass.
Can I ask a question? I believe under our, under our current grass ordinance and grass letters, you're utilizing the unsafe building provisions of the stat, of the Indiana statutes for enforcement?
No.
So you're, so you're not trying to collect the cost-
We're using section 94.4 of our ordinance.
We, 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 if we didn't pay, then we, we-
So we're only using 94.4, so you're not trying to utilize the Indian code provisions for enforcement costs?
No.
Because the Indiana code provisions for enforcement costs require 10 days, but that's on the unsafe building.
Yeah, we're not using the unsafe building. We're using this section only specifically here.
But Jamie, I'll tell you, I wouldn't want to live next door to someone who doesn't maintain their property, someone who doesn't cut their grass and don't care to, and don't care what anybody else says, they're going to do it from year to year.
And I'm not trying to protect those people, I guess, in my mind, I'm just trying to-
You're trying to take care of the good citizen and you should, and so should we, myself. And we do. We try to help the good citizens of Greensburg. The ones who don't care, we want to help them too, we're going to cut their grass. And then the landlord's going to have to pay for it, somebody is Sunday when the place is sold. We owe it to the residents of Greensburg, the good residents of Greensburg who maintain their property, who want their place to look good and can't do anything about their neighbor that don't maintain their property and they expect us to do it for them. And it is our responsibility to enforce the ordinances and laws of Greensburg to protect our residents. I go through it every day, all the time, you know? We get people calling and complaining and I don't blame them. I don't blame them. And we can't, we can't find every place that needs the grass cut. You know, I drive down the road, I call Jen Black City Hall or such, such address on this street, the grass needs to be cut. You know, I, I've got more important things to do than going on grass duty, but someone has to take care of the residents. And it's me complaining, it's so big, somebody needs to.
I understand your point and I have a little bit of a diggle about that too, on one hand, on the other hand, I really do see that it is being used. And five days is not unreasonable, is not too short a period for which somebody to act. And, you know, if, if it's a bad situation and that individual is unable personally, then there are ways that they can find somebody, a neighbor kid or some, there are ways that they can get somebody to help them out.
And if Glenn has a large area right by his house and we have to feed on that people every year.
Jamie, the neighbors want to do, well, something happened, I'm riding older, my wife couldn't push me older. I called HB K and said, "Jamie, I'm sick, I can't do it, I can't cut the grass, I can't invite anybody to cut it for me. Would you come over and cut it?" And Jamie came and said, "Yeah, I'll be over."
I, you know, I, I see your point, but I think five days is not unreasonable to ask somebody to act or to find a way for them to respond in order to expedite things because when you do have to wait, because they're not going to get to it right away, they're really in a stack, if you say five days, they're really going to give them probably closer to 10.
By the time we give here, the letter hits mail out, it's probably closer to 10 in the end.
Well, now, my point is-
If this changed, it won't be a letter, you could serve it with a police officer, so it doesn't bother them.
That's true, but-
So we're going to shorten that time some.
Even at that.
Well, I'm not going to send a police officer to Harrison, Ohio for the one this morning. I'm not going to send a police officer to Batesville for the one out by Glenn. I'm not going to send a police officer to the one that's in the north side of Indianapolis. I'm not going to send a police officer to Oregon for one. But I think by the time you give them five days notice, when they get it, if they can't make a phone call here and find somebody to mow the grass on a property they bought as an investment within five days, then they're not doing anything.
The legislature, the city of Indianapolis, did introduce a bill, I'm not sure how it went this year, on, for example, banks who claim property and then just left the name, the Orange houses, you know, we're right here, across from here in west north, wide on East Main, wide on First Street, and look at the place, just the ones I seen today. I mean, they catch your eye when the neighbor's grass is that tall and the neighbor's is this tall.
And I'll be honest, 99 out of 100 of them are either absentee owners or bank repossessionists. I would say 1% of them would be someone who is under the weather, doesn't get their grass mowed. And most of the time, we make an effort to call them. If anybody in the department knows it, we call them.
I completely understand, I guess I'm just still-
You're caring for the wrong reason. You're caring for the wrong reason. You, you've got to be able to want to help people who want to help themselves. The people who give us the grief don't care about helping themselves.
I know, I understand. It's the whole 80/20 principle though, but you know, we're going to make, you know, we're going to make this rule because we've got, you know, we've got-
That's right. But what much time we waste every year on working with the, with the folks who won't treat their neighbor with respect and cut their own grass, that's the people we're working for, working to do this on. The people who care about their lawns and the looks of their houses, they will ask for help or people will stop and help them. The people who don't get help, most of them don't want it and they're satisfied with having to put their grass outside.
I agree with Jamie on the 80/20, but the current ordinance, all it does is offend the 80%. It doesn't do anything to help with 20% possible problems.
And you'll bring from a small town, usually we know the people who live there. If it's someone who needs help, we help and somebody will help them. Greensburg's a good place, people help people. But when they don't care themselves, people aren't going to help those, those folks. I'd make it two days, it's up to me. It's already six inches tall or seven or eight or nine, when you going to cut your grass?
Count them, Lance, it's all that part.
Are you lazy or are you lying? Can't see your grass is tall or you're just too lazy to cut it?
I understand, I, I just-
Ask this gentleman right here, sitting on Front Road.
Say it every day.
He went over and cut the front yard himself, so he wouldn't have to put up with it.
We done it this year.
I mean, I don't know what everybody else's feelings are, but I'm not, but I'm not always the conversation on it.
They deserve the good people of Greensburg that work in that force, if I wasn't going to cut their grass.
I can, can we make, here's a compromise suggestion. Can we change it to five business days, so it basically gets more week?
Why don't we give one to cut it?
Or say seven days then.
Or say seven days.
I'll take it five business days.
Or seven days. Just say seven days.
Because if it's five business days, it's seven anyhow. If you know five on Monday, I got to get up till the following Monday, so it's seven days.
You know, five days to cut grass is a long time.
I understand.
I already need to be cutting a month ago.
I think it's a small concession.
These guys will have to go cut, went and do it for them.
I'd go for five business days. I'll make that motion.
Well, shorten it to a length from nine to seven too, so we're going to catch up to some of that.
These guys who work in the street department, they're not either grass cutting business, they're in the street maintenance business. Not grass cutting.
I'll make a motion, we make five business days. Second.
Are we, um-
This is an amendment to the-
This is an amendment to the ordinance. I think you have to do at least two readings to, to an amendment to an ordinance. I mean, you can, you can move, you can make, you can do this in the first reading and then do it the next council, or you can move to suspend parliamentary procedure and do all, both readings tonight, but in order to amend, in order to have that multiple readings.
I think, I think we do need to give them-
I agree.
And, and as much as I agree with you, Gary, but we probably should have done this in first March.
Well, we want to do this way, I mean, Jamie said, "Well, I'm going to start off these poor people, we got to be fair with them." There's still grass in there, Jamie.
I think the, I think the change now, for sure, uh, sure, like, the seven inches is a good, lots of change, making the other adjustment in terms of notice is, is a reasonable way to, to get around the problem and five business days is, or seven days, whichever one, I'll make it simple to you, whatever seven days is from the day that you send it, that might be easier to count in five business days, but either way, I think that's a reasonable adjustment.
So I'll amend my motion to amend the ordinance, five business days and seven inches. Seven inches. On the first reading.
The second is number, Mark, what's the ordinance number you remember?
It's a motion to amend ordinance-
2011 dash 10.
Okay. I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. You can't say aye. Motion fast.
I made concessions, see, I made concessions.
Passionate about grass.
My ice gets cut, I mean, it's fine.
I did, people complain about the police station lawn one time a few years ago on Labor Day, I would never come to reason shade and I cut the grass myself.
You want to hear my board works report?
You.
Darren, since you weren't here, would you like some help?
No, I-
You're not?
Okay. Here you go. We had, we do have more things to discuss.
Darren, I have some, that's the first I want to take.
Reading Financial Group was in for the board works to make a presentation and they did vote and they approved for me to enter into a contract if the council, of course they did the right thing, if the council so agreed to spend the dollars that need to be spent for the financial assessment that we kind of asked for. Which now is critical times, the parts of circuit breakers and things of that nature. It's been a long time since the city of Greensburg came in, I guess I believe this is all the ballgame of the constitution, the amendment and everything else.
What, what areas are you going to be asking for investment?
All departments with the exception of the utilities.
And are you looking at expenses or are you looking at income?
We're looking at income and, and also throwing our capital improvement plans in there, what to do, need to spend money on, for seeing the future.
I'm most, I'm most concerned about getting a handle on revenue projections for, I don't want to talk about it, but what are the other revenue projections that we're going to do there, and other kinds of funds that we have a, have a, uh, that are still-
They did give us some actual information tonight and they also give some anticipated revenues for the future.
But I'm, I really want to know, I want to see a trend, the last couple of years, I want to see the projections next two or three.
And they have some, don't they?
Yeah, I, there's much to talk here, I have all this, something Glenn wanted or anybody wants.
You know, I, I don't need to see that, I'm just saying, I just think that that's the kind of information that we need in order to make the budget decisions come in August.
Otherwise, most of the stuff that they're going to be getting is either coming from the, the annual report or the budget order, we, most of that information is being provided to them, so the actual, I don't know, I think now the technology, the fact findings that will be more simplified, they're able to get, they're able, they either call us and get the information on current stuff like they did the other day, or they can get it out on the gateway, EGF's gateway website, which, you know, we, we provide the information. So to do some, some budgeting and a capital improvement plan, I think they're looking at around, the estimate was like $19,000. To put that together, that's over time, that's not like-
What are we going to have in a year term?
What are we going to have right now?
When we start doing our bud, yeah, when we start, we start to budget for 14 and obviously-
Right. Well, I mean, we have, I mean, we have where we're at, I mean, we would have to be able to push-
I know we have what we have, but I want to know what, what they're, I want to see a trend from what we've had, what the impact of our caps have been and going to be and what their projections are for not only property, property assessment, but also whether funding sources from state funds.
I mean-
And that's what they, they will do.
I mean, they will do that for us if we want them to, if we, you know, if you, I guess that was my feeling, I mean, I, we can provide, you know, the park script, the park president's office can provide that information, I just don't know if it looks the way-
You can provide the actual, what we have.
The council will want to look, I don't, I don't know.
But what Glenn is looking for is what they anticipate the revenue to be paid to us in the future for next two or three years.
Yeah, based on, based on, on trends that they can see, based on the information they can get from EGF or state's resources, based on what our trending has been here, assessment wise.
Well, and that will all tie into what we will do for future too, because that's going to be the, even, even saying we're going to, we're asking them to look at a capital improvement plan for us, it's still kind of the same bird because you're still asking them to look and see what we're going to be able to afford in the future.
Right, right.
Whether it's raises, whether it's staff, whether it's cutbacks, whether it's changing the way we do our health insurance, I mean, all those things as far as the things that we want, they get some, some guidance from them.
Your total rev, your total revenues like 010, 012, and what they anticipated is for 14, 15, 16?
Yeah, they, those two reports that, uh, just kind of a sample of what they've given us a couple of times when they came to meet with the mayor and I, just kind of give us a sample of what they could put together for us. So that's, if that, funding wise for us, I had, I did not get a chance to double check that or look at that between meetings because they ran into each other, that was my plan. And then they have con, potential contract out there that board works agreed to, you know, move forward with, if council felt comfortable with funding it, so.
What was the cost, you said?
The estimated cost for, for like a municipality to do budgeting and or capital improvement plans was like $19,000. That's over time, that's not like it's all going to be this year, it's going to be depending on how much time it takes us, I mean.
Yeah, my, my biggest concerns are the, the whole revenue side. I think the expense side, you've got that information, we could probably, we could put that together the last several years. We can do some projections if we want, based, or you can.
And I think they're going to be able to give us some.
Yeah, but the revenue pieces, I think, are the ones that are more outsider control.
And they were only put together as some kind of a projection on razor SKU cap rate also, so I don't know if we want to still have them do that, the SKU cap rate, we're going to reestablish it. We can reestablish it ourselves.
If we need to.
We don't have to have them do it for us, but once we do that, they said they will take that, whatever we get through and then they can do that, they'll project that for us also. They'll take all the funds and do projections.
That, that's where I think we need to go personally.
I mean, the expenditures are what they are, it's the revenues that always seem to be that, the unknown.
And definitely raise taxes, even what they are, I hope very good.
No, no, actually if you reestablish the rate, we're just getting back what we-
Was the one time we were at five- For one time, we were at five percent.
Yeah, we're not worried about that. But, so.
So if I can find the money to pay them, what, what.
I'm supporting of the, the revenue side, I'm not necessarily, I think I need to analyze the expense side, but if you both think.
Maybe what we'll do is we'll have them tie in the, the, the revenue, so that we can have them help us figure out what we can afford for the future, whether it's to add on to the street department, or whether it's to add staff to the fire department, or to, you know, police department, or whether we have to start making cutbacks, and we don't make any improvements on the property.
Right.
The revenue's gonna drive the whole thing anyway, so if, if there is no money, there won't be any changes, so. Is that okay with you guys, if you're not providing money to pay them?
Do we need a vote on that? I'm getting a motion to.
Yeah, if you guys wanna move forward with it, if you wanna make a motion from your board, and the Board of Works made a motion just to allow the contract to be signed by the mayor, if, if council bring two funding projects.
You okay with it?
I'm okay, I think we need to do it, I, I'm scared to death where our budget's going every year, you know, in the last few years, but, I'd love to have the.
I think that you, Bridget, let you know that with the circuit breakers, they're cutting a hundred and twenty thousand, anticipated revenue.
That was the, he, it's the overall amount, if everyone paid their property taxes, what you would get, what those people got in credits, that, it's around a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, so, I mean, it's, it's always, you know, assessment changes, and or people pay or don't pay, there's some fluctuation, but the overall thought is if everybody paid, and there, no, no change, we, we would, we would, the city of Greensburg is about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, I think I said that.
You said what's happening. Well, I, I would move that we would authorize the mayor to sign a contract for the financial review with regard to revenues.
Including a, they would do the CIP first, too, I think.
Yeah, I can do that without any, any cost.
But that's, that's part of revenues.
Yeah, the CIP, yeah, CIP will be part of that, 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 please.
Well, I don't know that you can approve, it's not an agenda item currently, that the.
Yeah.
Yeah, we haven't amended the agenda, so if you're going to do it, you'd have to formally move to amend the agenda to.
Unless they dislave the Board of Works.
This item, unless you, unless you wanna bring it up in the next.
What we have here, reading group?
Not on, not, it's on Board of Works, it's, it's not on council.
It's not on the council.
Yep.
Because they were gonna be looking at signing the contract, that's why we didn't put it off with the agendas, we weren't sure whether the Board of Works can move forward, so we didn't put it on the council agenda.
So can we legally amend the agenda this far into the agenda?
I don't think you can, I'm sorry. Well.
Do you wanna just go with what the Board of Works, well, they asked if you want the council to approve, yeah, they want you to.
Where would the funds come from?
Where would the funds come from, uh, from consulting fees, and or legal services?
I'm just wondering, I mean, is it something that they've already budgeted?
I mean, we have, I'm appropriated for those types of things.
So, and then if the Board of Works approved the spending.
So technically, you've already approved it, budgeted.
That, that's what I'm getting at, and then the Board of Works has already moved to approve it, so.
They're, they specifically moved to approve pending approval from this body, so their, their original, their approval is conditioned upon an approval from this body.
If we can't approve it, we have to wait until next.
Yeah, if you can't approve, and this, I agree, Mayor, I don't think you can amend the, the agenda this far.
Right.
I think I amended it in the beginning, just because I didn't know whether we wanted to bring in any of the other funds closer or not, but it didn't have.
Okay, I'll, I'll give Errol's.
Oh, Errol's, Board of Works report.
Just maybe, just, maybe, I know we can't approve it, but we could just get everybody's thoughts on it real quick, and see where the council's gonna feel about it, and at least that way we can start preparing.
Tend to move forward, so if you're ready, you want, you want, as soon as you can get them.
I'm definitely favored for this.
I'll just put it down, that is amended, that's a discussion, but everybody can talk.
I think you have a strong brand support.
And then we can just put it on, we can use.
Okay, I bring up updated Board of Works meeting, you already heard from the Canada or X group descriptions, and Reading Financial Group, they get there, they were here for Board of Works, Gary Murray discussed Dr. Wellich's plot on his property that's for the easement, Greg Gary.
He has some permanent, permanent right-of-way on First Street.
And, um, let's see. We voted to accept an easement from Honda along Van Deughey Road for the repair, with the bridge there, that area, that will be given to the city of Greensburg fifty feet up. And we looked at roofing contract repairs on the part that has not been repaired, the school library, and on this, on the doors here on down east, get a price on that, it's been tabled, and we can get, you know, concrete prices, till next month. Uh, we did renew the service contract with Honda with the fireman, that's been done. Uh, there were two new emergency personnel that were, took Darrell's tonight, one for the fire department, one for the police department, and Sergeant Brendan Bridges has been promoted to the rank of, left absent by Larry Dats, to lieutenant, and David Wilson will be appointed to sergeant position, to fill that position. Sergeant Wilson was a sergeant one other time, and he dropped it for family reasons. So, we'll resume that, and, so, and then the wa- the wastewater, uh, water utility rate studies has been approved by Board of Works, by M.B.A., to review those, once again, it's been four years, and this is the last year of the increase, and so we will be able to see what they say about that, in other capital improvement plans and everything, so that we can, and that's pretty well, everything's, everything that was discussed. Robin Meyer has been reappointed to Board of Works, and have a interview tomorrow with possible school board member.
Pleasant.
Tony Owens, and, and we're interviewing another individual for replacement of Red Lake County Department, so those possibly taken care of. Any questions from the council, recommendations, or have you? Department heads, members of the audience? Okay, none of you are taking a motion to adjourn?
No.